Okay, everybody. Welcome. And I'd like to start our meeting with the Aboriginal acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the land of which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Tenaha, Sylix, and Senix peoples and is home to many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honour their connection to the land and rivers and respect the importance of our environment to our strength as a community. And are there any late items?
I have a late item if I could add to the agenda. I would like to just touch on an email that was sent to us by Bill McDoel about National Volunteer Week next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll put that under number nine, late items. With that, like a motion to adopt the agenda then with the addition of the late item. Councillor Woodward, Councillor Charles Wood, all in favour? Kerry, thanks very much. And now we have the public participation section, so anyone that wishes to speak is welcome to come forward. I've got a few little ground rules here that we lay out ahead of time. The public participation is 15 minutes total. The speaker may only address council once for a maximum of three minutes unless authorised otherwise by unanimous vote of council members present. Speakers must not address council regarding matters of which public hearings must be held and are being held prior to council consideration of a matter of adopting a bylaw. Speakers must not address council regarding permits for which public notice has been given or has been given prior to council consideration of issuance of a permit. Speakers shall address their comments through the mayor as chair. And with that, if there's somebody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to us now, if you're not on the agenda, then now is your chance. So Brenton, you had your hand up first, and then Kiomi, you had your hand up as well. So Brenton, you're up, my friend.
Thank you. And respectfully through the chair, my name is Brenton Raibi. And I'm new to glasses, so I'll do this one. I live at 512 Hendrick Street. I'm a bit of a Nelson heritage buff. I've just been somewhat dismayed in general at the mistakes in referencing the names of some of the streets in Nelson, in particular, the name of the street where I live. I live at the intersection of Hendrick Street and Hurridge Lane. As a matter of information, Hurridge Lane is named after Herbert Hurridge, who was a local Member of Parliament for 23 years, starting in 1948. In fact, our longest-serving Member of Parliament. I believe that he deserves consideration of having his name referenced correctly. The residents who live along Hurridge Lane also deserve the same consideration. I understand that slips do happen, and I thank you for your consideration in this matter. Final note that occurred to me as I came up, that I do hope that at some point the washrooms can be opened for those who arrive here for these meetings. This is in consideration of a 54-year-old. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And I make that mistake all the time.
And it takes a very strong presence to kind of get over it in the flow, so that's why I'm simply...
Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, thanks, Brenton. Thanks for that. Thank you. Kiomi, welcome.
Hey. Hey. I don't have lipstick all over my face.
No.
So I'm Kiomi Tucker, and I'm here as a parent advocate for autism awareness and acceptance. Just a quick one before I start. I'd just like to acknowledge that I use, when speaking about autism, I use language first. Sorry. Identity first language instead of person first language. This is, for instance, I say autistic child instead of a child with autism. That's because the vast majority of autistic adults prefer to be addressed this way. So I wanted to share with you that I'm bringing in Canucks Autism Network to Nelson to do some training for, I'm feeling really nervous, sorry, community training workshops. These workshops will be free, open to anybody who wants to attend, and will be taking place April 30th and May 1st. There's four workshops: educators, first responders, sports and recreation, and healthcare. These workshops normally cost $1,000 each to attend, but because of some wonderful volunteers who fundraised, some business sponsorships, we are able to offer them to everybody for free. This is a chance for everybody to come out and learn a little bit more about a different neurotype and how they can make small changes in order to make autistic people feel more included in the community. I'd love to see all of you sitting here attend. The goal is to educate in order to achieve acceptance. That's everything.
What are the dates again, Kiomi?
April 30th and May 1st.
April 30th and May 1st.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll email us details?
Pardon me?
You'll email us?
I can email you details, yeah. No problem. Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Kiomi. Thank you very much for doing that. We appreciate it.
Should be good.
Thank you. All right, onward and upward. Next on our agenda list is the Kootenay Conservation Society. And Kiomi, that goes back to what your dad said earlier about volunteerism, you know, there's an example of volunteers that helped to put on those workshops for free.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Hi, thank you so much for having me here as a delegation. My name's Juliette Craig, and I'm the program director for the Kootenay Conservation Program, and I've met many of you before. You're gonna shine this to the screen, or...
Sir is gonna put it up, and you might wanna just go into, there should be a view and screen.
Okay. I'm more used to PowerPoint. Perfect. So tonight, I'm here to talk about local conservation funds, including what they are and how they're established, and would residents of Nelson be supportive of a local conservation fund? So local conservation funds are a local government tax-based service. So they're a dedicated fund where taxpayers pay a property or parcel tax towards a fund for conservation projects in the service area where they're collected. And they're a proven innovative approach for addressing local conservation priority projects while also building economic capacity by leveraging funding into a region. We know people in the Kootenays support safe water, healthy watersheds, fish and wildlife habitats, and natural areas, and these projects support these values and then help support local government goals of climate resilience and sustainability. So the Columbia Valley Local Conservation Fund was the first of its kind in Canada's history, established in 2008 in the Regional District of East Kootenay, where taxpayers agreed to pay $20 per parcel per year towards a dedicated fund for conservation. And that includes two electoral areas and three municipalities within them. And it leverages about, it funds about $200,000 a year to allocate towards various projects. And because it was new, there was a 10-year sunset clause put on that service in 2008, which was due to expire in 2018, but the directors unanimously voted to remove the sunset clause altogether, and that indicates the success of that service in the RDEK. So in 2014, the Regional District of Central Kootenay used that model to establish the Kootenay Lake Local Conservation Fund, also by referendum. And that fund is for Electoral Areas A, D, and E on Kootenay Lake, and it's $15 per parcel per year. So the funds leverage a significant amount of money. So between 2016 and 2021, the Kootenay Lake Local Conservation Fund generated $468,000 paid into the service, and it leveraged an additional $2.1 million in in-kind support as well as funding partners to those projects. And that doesn't include the $18 million towards the Next Creek acquisition of Darkwood south of here. So funds are spent locally, so they have benefits like purchase of materials and supplies as well as support for jobs in organizations, contractors, and local businesses. And the reason it's so successful in leveraging bigger funders is because large funders like to see local first-in support to these projects. So the concept of local conservation funds, it's gaining support throughout the province. There's been, the Regional District of Okanagan, Similkamie, and their municipalities established this fund in 2016, Regional District of North Okanagan in 2020, and many other local governments are looking at this model across the province. These local governments use the alternative approval process rather than referendum. So the way it works is that the local government does a property tax or a parcel tax requisition, and then the Kootenay Conservation Program as a partner helps with putting out the call for proposals and bringing together the technical review committee and reviewing the proposals, and then provides recommendations to the elected officials. And the elected officials decide which projects to fund based on the local technical review committee recommendations as well as local priorities of the elected officials. And the result is these amazing valuable conservation projects in the region. So the Kootenay Conservation Program, by our role, helps relieve that administrative burden on the local government staff. So there's been over 100 grants developed between the Columbia Valley and Kootenay Lake area, and I encourage you to visit our website, kootenayconservation.ca. You can see all the featured projects and learn about the amazing diverse projects that have been supported by these funds. I'm going to provide just a few examples that may be relevant to the city of Nelson. So fish and creek habitat restoration, working with landowners to create pollinator pathways, wetland restoration and forest restoration, including fire smart in the forest edges, a number of wildlife projects, including grizzly bear coexistence, which is the 50-50 cost share program of electric fencing to reduce human-wildlife conflict, invasive species education and control projects, water monitoring projects, both water quality and water quantity, and this provides local governments with real-time information on the health of their watersheds. And finally, the acquisition of lands that have local significance and importance for sustaining wildlife populations. And to the market research polling, and they conducted a telephone survey of 900 adult residents of the RDEK and RDCK, not including where the local conservation funds already exist. If those areas had been included, presumably the results would have been even stronger. So they divided the areas into subregions that included at least one electoral area and then the related municipality. So in this case, it's Kootenay Lake that includes the village of Caslow, city of Nelson, and Area F. So it's basically the remainder of Kootenay Lake that doesn't have a local conservation fund. So they asked the question about supporting the fund in three ways. Do you support the idea of a fund? Would you be likely to contribute financially? And do you support creating a mandatory levy or tax-based service for this fund? So I'll present the results for the whole Kootenays and then by region. So supporting the idea of a dedicated fund, 80% of residents support this idea. And when we look at support by region, in the Kootenay Lake area, it's 90% of residents. When we asked about contributing financially, nearly two-thirds of residents said they would be willing to contribute financially, and that's up 10% from 2012. And then again, the Kootenay Lake area, three-quarters of residents would be likely to contribute. And finally, asking about support for a mandatory levy, 58% support this mandatory levy in the region. And again, Kootenay Lake has the strongest support, with two-thirds of residents supporting this mandatory levy. So the conclusion from this market research was that the remainder of Kootenay Lake and the Slocan Valley had the strongest support for this service, and Area H is taking this service to referendum in October with the local government election in the Slocan Valley, and Area F will be doing a public consent process for this service in the New Year, along with two other RDCK electoral areas. So we recognize the world has changed since 2018, but what we do know about the pandemic is that people are looking to nature, and also that the heat and fires of last summer and the floods and mudslides of this winter are increasing awareness of climate disruption and the need to address it. So in summary, local conservation funds are a local government tax-based service. It's an innovative and successful approach that's being used in B.C. Funded projects support community values of healthy watersheds, fish and wildlife habitat, clean water and clean air, and also build economic capacity into the region where they're established. And they in turn support local government goals of climate resiliency and sustainability. So I'm not asking for any decision with my delegation tonight. I just wanted to provide you with this information for you to consider, and I'd be happy to meet with any of you individually or come again as a delegation. This is my first in-person presentation in two years, but I have booklets, and I also have the market research results in print, but I also have links to all of this digitally as well, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Page, Councillor Woodward, Councillor Lockmore.
Thanks, Juliette, for giving us this presentation. It was really lovely to see all of that change and sentiment over the years for these kinds of things. With our climate work that we have laid out in Nelson next, if Nelson was to go through a process and join the existing Kootenay Lake Conservation Fund service, would we be able to draw upon that fund to execute projects as the local government? Like, would we be able to put forward those ideas and go through an evaluation process and tap into that fund?
Yep. So currently, in the terms of reference, the people eligible to apply are registered nonprofit societies, local governments, and First Nations bands. The elected officials can change the terms of reference as long as it's consistent with what people voted on originally for the referendum. But at this point, yes, local governments can apply for the funds.
Okay. And then, just a supplemental, if I may. What would the process look like for the city of Nelson to evaluate whether or not to go into this conservation fund that's up the lake here and join our other regional partners?
Sarah wants to jump in on this one as well, but, you know, I think we would, first of all, decide whether we would join an existing service or do our own and partner. I think that would be an important consideration, and, you know, for sure, the funding that you tax in Nelson would go to Nelson important projects. Look at the, you could look at the service bylaw for the RD and what input you would have into that or what terms you could have in that that, you know, ensured that, you know, like I said, the taxation that's been taxed in Nelson supports, you know, projects that Nelson residents would support, which don't necessarily have to be in Nelson proper, but certainly ones that they would think were important. So I think that's the initial steps that you would do, is to evaluate that, and then, you know, we, unlike Regional District, do not have to, you know, go to AEP or referendum to institute taxation. I think there are some regulations around parcel taxes that we'd have to look at.
Councillor Woodward.
What would, thank you, Mayor. What would be generated in a place like Nelson?
I don't, mm-hmm. So in the Okanagan, they did a property tax. So if Nelson were to consider its own fund, it could use the model of a property tax or a parcel tax. So if we went with $20 per parcel per year, my understanding is there's about 5,000 homes, so it'd be about 100,000 a year, which would make it feasible for the city to do its own fund if it was interested in that. In other rural areas, it, there's not enough fund generated to have a standalone fund, so they would pool with the Kootenay Lake Local Conservation Fund. And current contribution agreements with local governments, the KCP, Kootenay Conservation Program, does 9% of an administrative fee, and that's for the technical review committee issuing the grants, reviewing them, monitoring project reporting, and all of that.
Just a supplemental, Mayor?
Yep.
So the funds are generated. I'm just wondering, like, how would the projects be decided on? Like, would it go, like, would there be some kind of online voting for the public? Or how would that be? Because we, because that money, like, as the city manager was saying, that money wouldn't necessarily be spent here in Nelson. How would...
So how it works in other areas is it's a pooled fund. So for example, in the Columbia Valley, it's the electoral areas and the municipalities. The funding all goes into one pot. There was a lot of discussion about what that would look like in the beginning when this was brand-new, and would it be fair, and would it be distributed geographically? The technical review committee evaluates things like project effectiveness, feasibility, cost effectiveness, impact, and there was a guidance document for Kootenay Lake developed of what projects would have the greatest impact in this region. So they evaluate those things. The local government representatives then decide, they take that into consideration, but also maybe look at geographic fairness or equity. So there was one project that fell below the line of funding, and they actually moved the line and put more in to allow for that project because it was in an area that hadn't received a lot of funding. So the local government has the authority to make the decisions on the project. It doesn't go to the public. It is decided on by the elected officials. So typically, there's a report that describes each project and its benefits and what the technical review committee has said. So the, and the, the terms of reference is based on a market research that was done by KCP of what residents value in this study as well, but valuing clean water, climate resilience, fish and wildlife and their habitats, and natural areas.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Lockmore.
Okay. So thank you for that, that presentation, and I'm not going to get into debate or discussion, per se, other than to say, I think it's a great idea, and I, and I love how it's, it doesn't just provide a mechanism for doing the necessary conservation work we need to do, but it sounds like we're actually would be tapping into some capacity, some technical capacity, which in some ways would save us money, because these are conservation projects that we probably have to get involved in increasingly anyways. So to me, this is, this is just a win-win-win for the city. Do you, so I'll make this a question then. Do you, do you find in the other jurisdictions, like the East Kootenays, are you, is, why it was so enthusiastically and unanimously supported, was it in part because they saw the technical capacity that you guys bring to the table? And these are projects they probably have to get involved in anyways? Is that, not to put words in your mouth, but...
Yes. So they saw the leveraged funding in the East Kootenay. It's eight to one. For every dollar that a taxpayer spends, there's $8 more coming in in partner funding and in-kind. So things like provincial government priorities may not be a local government's priorities, but if a project's going, they may bring their expertise and time to that. The technical review committee also provides excellent feedback. I mean, these are amazing experts in the area that say you can make this project stronger by doing this, that, or the other, or have you considered this or that? And so some of the projects don't get funded the first year, but they use that feedback and make their projects stronger. And they also support things that otherwise have a really hard time getting funding, and it's because of their local conservation fund, for example, that the Columbia Lake Stewardship Society exists and monitors their lake every year and does projects that are really important to the residents. So it's also that capacity to organizations that may otherwise struggle to exist. So it's building that capacity locally for doing projects, as you say, that we want done anyway, and it allows that opportunity for organizations to take them on.
Great. Councillor Page.
I don't know if there's anything else bubbling up out there, but this is one, I think, that I would like to refer to staff to look at. Is it a Nelson service? Is it joining the existing service and having a conversation about what the terms of reference over there might look like? Is this stuff that if we take it to our climate team, would they be able to leverage this? So hopefully, before the end of this term, I would, I would like to refer to staff and say, what would be the mechanics of taking this on, and what would be the options available to us to dedicate some funds towards this?
I'll second. I need to... For a referral. Obviously, you have tax this year. You have some bylaw in progress from now. So this is a 2022 project, so between now and October.
Yeah. No, this is long-term.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Couple of questions come to my mind, is there's a number of organizations doing similar work. As an example, the Nature Trust would be an example. But what comes to my mind is, don't get me wrong here, I like your idea, but what comes to my mind is, as a taxpayer, I'd be thinking, well, what if we went out to the community and asked them for 20 bucks a head for the library? The rec complex, the arts community, heritage, conservation. Like, should we do one-offs for every piece of taxation or every project that we have in the municipality? That's the kind of question I would, I would like to be asking the public. If I'm going to give you, if you're going to do a parcel tax, or is this where you'd want it earmarked? That'd be my first question, like, because I think everybody should be involved in that conversation. And maybe you would want to put a list up there of tramway, the arts, heritage, conservation would be one of them for sure, and, you know, have the, have a selection for the committee, for the community to, to look at. I don't know if I'm making any sense to you or not, but, you know, if we go to one-off taxation every time somebody shows up here, we could have 10, $200 in taxes on everybody's bill at the end of the year.
And that really might be something that comes forward from staff in a process of what approval processes would be appropriate? Do we want to put it on a referendum? Do you want to go to the public through research? Do you want to use an alternative approval process? Or do we want to just make a council decision to do it? But I think in the scope of referring this to staff and saying, what are the mechanics locally, the municipality, with the Regional District, you know, what, what options would we have? Because I'm not necessarily against asking the public, and then if the public doesn't come through on it, saying, okay, you know what? We put the question to them, and sometimes that's just the way it is, and the public decides, no.
I agree 100%, but personally, I'd like to see five, six things up there. You know, choose one that you'd give $20 to, like, what you're suggesting, Councillor Page, is that we take this one and ask the public, but I, I think, you know, maybe we need to ask the public, would you put $20 more towards art, arts community every year? You know, I'm just thinking, like, all the things that we're involved in, I'm not suggesting, like, I liked the piece about the leveraging that you brought up, and then I look at other organizations like Ducks Unlimited. Would we give $20 a year to them as an example, right?
Well, they could bring a project forward for the conservation fund.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak unless you're asking a question. So that's a really good, good point that you're making, and I think there's a few things there. One is, when we've done market research, and this is the third time, and we haven't done it, we've hired experts who do this out of Vancouver, Toronto, or wherever they do it. When, when the question is asked, what is your, what contributes to your quality of life living here? The number-one answer is related to the environment. It's related to the hunting opportunities, fishing, hiking, natural areas, quality of water, quality of life. So this is a way to support what residents, why they live here. It's one of the services that is offered by living here, so it supports that. But it is a really good point. There's a lot of other areas that can use funding and would also benefit quality of life. This is also a really proven approach. There's four of these already in B.C., and there's more and more local governments, Langley's looking at this, Delta, places on the island, so it's not the first time this has been done. And so we have an existing model for how this works, the terms of reference, the way it's structured, so there's a lot less administrative burden than creating something brand-new. And, you know, it's, as Councillor Page mentioned, organizations like the Nature Trust and Ducks Unlimited can apply for these funds, and if they have a really great project in the region, they've, Nature Trust has certainly been awarded to acquire lands for conservation based, through conservation funds as well. So it does provide those opportunities to a diverse range of organizations.
Thank you very much, Councillor Lockmore.
Yeah, and if I may, the, the one thing about conservation projects is that it is universal. It's not just for everybody. There's no question about sort of targeting funding to one group or another. It is the baseline. This is for absolutely everybody, and not just the people living today, but the people of future generations. So it, to me, this is categorically a different kind of thing, and something that we've so dramatically underfunded and are just paying the costs now. So it feels like we've got a big debt to pay back on this, so, yeah, thank you. May I have one of Mr. B's?
Would anyone like a booklet? I don't know who does paper anymore, but...
Need to vote on referral?
Any around?
We have a motion for it.
Motion to receive the presentation?
No, motion to refer.
Sure, absolutely.
Motion to refer?
You have a mover and a secondary on referral.
I...
He's seconded, yeah.
Seconded.
All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's leftovers, I'll take the booklets back, but please do take if you want.
Yeah, we are.
Now paying for the booklets? Yeah, we are.
Yeah, you're welcome. Area E too.
No.
Oh!
F and H?
Thank you.
No, you got it wrong. E is in.
E is in, F is not.
I was.
We're paying.
Thank you.
You and I are paying. H is doing the referendum in October. F is doing alternate approval process.
F, if you're in F, you're not in it yet.
But they're they're going through.
They've all taken.
Perfect, that's wonderful.
Thanks, Juliet.
It's there's a there's a lot of pushback.
Okay, guys.
From the regional district, individual regional district directors on joining this. It was put, it's been on the table three times in the last year. And it's been referred and pushed off. And just one group now is going through with it for referendum along with the October election. And the rest will wait till the spring. And it probably will still take some time then because they want to have total control over whatever funds they raise. And that's very problematic as part of the debate. And the fact that they, directors have spoken to the fact that they aren't really sure that this is something that their community members want to do. So it's not going to be a fast process to see all around the table at the regional district participating in a conservation program.
Another tax, right?
Well, that's what they're, I mean, tax, that's a concern for them always, the directors, that it's another form of tax, whether it's the parcel tax or a 1% or. So there has been quite a bit of, it's been several times to the table and it's just not quite flown because they tried just to get the rest of the whole table in and that wasn't going to happen.
Thank you. Okay, up next is the local government public notice requirements. And you have a package here that outlines what's being proposed tonight. And Gabe's going to give us a little bit of background on it, right?
That's correct, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor and Council, for having me tonight to present about this topic. For anybody in the public that might be listening, I'm Gabe. I'm from the Corporate Services Department, and I'll be presenting about the recent changes to the public notice requirements. As Council may remember too, there was a recent presentation from Development Services. And so this is in line with some of those changes. They were all made at the same time and they're changes to the Community Charter and the Local Government Act. And so a quick outline of this presentation is I'm just going to talk about the section that most concerns these public notice requirement changes, that's Section 94. We're going to talk about what public public notice requirements are, what the old section required, what the new section is requiring, and some considerations for Council as we move forward with this. So Section 94 of the Community Charter sets out the default public notice requirements. This is when there's a requirement in another part of the Community Charter and it'll refer back to Section 94. So these are the type of public notices that we run for all types of things. So it could be like the annual report, the annual tax sale, the dates of the council meetings for the year. So these run in the newspaper and they run twice a week. And that's been what is mandated under Section 94. So Section 94 is what governs, as I mentioned, the default public notice requirement. And just really quickly, a lot of this is probably quite obvious for elected officials, but why notice the public? Well, first and foremost, for a local government like us, we do it when it's legislatively required. But also, we do it because it connects us to our community. It provides an opportunity for people that want to know what's going on to know what's happening and when is it happening? And it gives them an opportunity to come and be heard. So it is a very important part of local government is making sure that the community has the ability to know what's going on and it supports a fair and transparent local government. Historically, how have public notices been achieved? It's been through newspapers. And that's what we've been doing here in Nelson. That's what the whole entire province has had to do because, as I'll mention in the next slide, the old section of the Community Charter, the old Section 94, required that a public notice be published in the newspaper that is distributed at least weekly for two weeks in a row. So that's what we've been doing. There's really no flexibility there and that in some ways made our job very simple. When there was a notice required pursuant to Section 94, we prepared the notice and we would send it to the Nelson Star and we'd say, can you run this for the next two weeks? So that section is now gone and it's been replaced by what I'm calling the new Section 94 of the Community Charter. So these are the the three main provisions, 94.2, 1, 2, and 3. Essentially, what that is doing is that it's providing for some flexibility. It's allowing council to make a decision as to how should public notice be achieved in their community? So it really allows a local government to look at their community and say, well, what are our options in terms of newspaper advertising? Who are our constituents and how are they receiving notices? How are we going to reach the most people? So just really quickly, I've kind of pasted the text there of the legislation. But what it's doing is that if council chooses, it can adopt a public notice bylaw. So we don't currently have a public notice bylaw. There wasn't any need for one because we were subject to Section 94. What the new Section 94 is doing is saying, if council would like to change what we've been doing to move away from noticing things twice a week or in two consecutive weeks in the local newspaper, we could do that by adopting a public notice bylaw. If we did that, or if council chose to do that, it would have to designate two alternative means of notice. And there's a lot of flexibility on what those could be, which is really quite interesting when you think about how there was no flexibility at all under the old Section 94. And now, if you look at the legislation, it says must specify at least two means of publication. And that's really all they've set out. The province has also provided some guidance by way of a regulation, which I'll touch upon as well. But it's really opened up the world for how we might achieve that public notice. And I'll talk about what are some things that we should think about or that council should think about as it decides whether a public notice bylaw would be appropriate for the city of Nelson. So the legislation required that a regulation accompany this and provide some guidance as to things that council must consider if they were to move forward with a public notice bylaw. These principles, the three principles that must be considered by council would be that the means of publication are reliable, suitable, and accessible. The regulations have gone on to provide a little bit of information as to what that means. So really quickly, publication would be reliable where it's the publication itself is something that's known to provide factual information and that it's updated at least once a month. That would be, that would match the reliability criteria. In terms of a publication that is suitable, it would be something that allows the information to be displayed legibly, that allows the publication to be published by a required date, and that allows a person to consult the notice more than once. And so you can think of something that wouldn't qualify would be like a radio advertisement. It wouldn't be something you can go back to. It would have just, you would have heard it in your car and it would have, it would be gone.
Podcast episode.
Exactly, a podcast episode would not meet that criteria most likely. Although, keep in mind, the province hasn't actually said what meets the criteria. They've just given us these regu, or council these regulations to consider. And finally, the accessibility component, which would be that the publication is available to a diverse audience or readership and that it can easily be found. So that's what you have to, that's what council has to work with if it were to move forward with a public notice bylaw. So now, the whole, in my mind, the whole point of this new legislation, and I'll remind council too, that this legislation is a response from the province to various municipalities that pass resolutions that went to UBCM, encouraging the province to look at this issue. So it provides the flexibility for a local government to look at its own community and come up with a way of noticing the public, that public that reflects what the community has available and the type of people that are in that community. So what does that mean for Nelson specifically? What are some things that we should think or that council should think about? Well, first and foremost, the opportunity for a public notice bylaw could potentially help reduce the amount of newspaper advertisements that we run. That would be one way to treat this. And I think a lot of municipalities will move in that direction. And that was the basis for some of these resolutions that went to UBCM. The reason being that in a community like Nelson, as you guys know, as council knows, the Nelson Star runs once a week. If you're in a bigger municipality, if you're in a Vancouver, there's a newspaper that is likely published every day. That's not the case here. So that's one thing to consider is that sometimes when we have a specific date where we have a notice that must be must be ran, we need to make sure that we are getting our advertisements to the Nelson Star several days ahead of their publication schedule for a paper that will be published the following Thursday. So it does sometimes create challenges in terms of the timing require, the timing. The other piece is that it is a significant expense. I did look back over the last four years as to how much the city has spent on legislatively required notices. So those don't include things like, for example, if we're advertising for a committee or a board vacancy, that's not a legislatively required advertisement. So that was removed from this analysis. But we're averaging about $45,000 a year in advertising costs for required notices. So it is, it is not an insignificant cost, obviously, for a city the size of Nelson. And then finally, I think we just need to think about who are we trying to reach? I don't know about all of you. I do read the Star every Thursday. I I like to do the crossword puzzle and I look through all the pages. So I know for myself, I see the ads. I'm also one of the staff members here that sends a lot of ads to the Star. So I typically want to make sure they've been ran and that there were no mistakes. But I don't know about other about other constituents in the city. And if this is their their primary source for for public notices, that would be something to think about. Another consideration too is the impact that this could have on newspapers throughout a region like the Cootines. And it's not just Nelson. I can imagine that the staff in Castlegar and Trail and other places will be looking at this legislation and wondering, could we save, you know, $40,000 a year if we just moved to online advertising, online notices? What would that do to our local paper? So I don't think it's the job of the local government to to subsidize the local paper, but it is a consideration because I would imagine that $45,000 for the Nelson Star is is a big, a big part of their revenue. So those are some considerations that come to mind for the city of Nelson. So if a public notice bylaw were to be considered, what are some means of publication that could that could sit in for a newspaper advertisement? And I'll talk a little bit about some of our options because council does have a lot of flexibility. But I did want to just show this slide because this comes directly from the provincial staff. So they've deemed, they've deemed these types of method methods as acceptable. So you'd have online or print newspaper, a local government website, a subscription service. That's not something we currently have. A community website or newsletter, again, not really something that I'm familiar with in this community. A local government Facebook page, so we do have a very active Facebook page. Direct email or mail out. We currently use a similar mechanism in terms of noticing people of our council meetings. So that is potentially something to consider. And then posting at recreation centers. Again, this is not an exhaustive list. This is just some methods that the province has said would be acceptable. This is my last slide. And one thing I wanted to touch on is that, and and to make sure that is clear in this presentation, is that it doesn't need to be all or nothing. So we don't need to say we're going to do, council is going to do a public notice bylaw, so we're not doing any more newspaper advertising. I think there's the possibility for a hybrid model. And so again, if we do nothing, we will continue running two advertisements for all of our required notices. And in a year like this year, there will be a lot of notices. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to. Yeah, you know, it's an election year, so you can imagine with an election or for those of you that paid attention during the last couple of elections and the by-election, there are a lot of required notices that go out. So if if council were to do, to direct staff to not move forward with this, we would continue doing two advertisements or an advertisement in two consecutive weeks in the Nelson Star. On the other hand, if council were to adopt a public notice bylaw and designate in that bylaw that one means of publication is the print newspaper, what that does is that it would no longer require us to do it in consecutive weeks. So as an example, that option two there, adopt a public notice bylaw that identifies one electronic means of notice and newspaper advertising. So now you've satisfied the bylaw requirement of two, of two means of notice. And there's no longer a requirement that you have to do that newspaper piece for two consecutive weeks. So now you've adopted a bylaw and that there's only a need to do one of those advertisements. And I think maybe an option like that strikes a balance because you're still providing it in the newspaper. Now you're also providing it somewhere else, maybe on the city website, maybe on the Facebook page. So you're you're striking a nice balance where you're still providing some business to the Nelson Star. You're still reaching that audience that relies on the newspaper publication. At the same time, you've now introduced another required place, like the Facebook page or the City of Nelson website, which we don't necessarily currently post all of our required notices on. And staff would need to to treat that as a legislative requirement going forward. So that's the option two. Option three is simply to adopt a public notice bylaw that identifies two non-newspaper means of notice. So for example, it could be the City of Nelson website and the Facebook page. And then outside of the context of that bylaw, you could adopt an additional policy that would direct staff to publish some notices in the paper. Maybe the ones, maybe we would come, council would approve a list of the notices that it thinks really needs to be in the newspaper, but it wouldn't be all of them. So again, it'd be a way to lessen that newspaper publication requirement. So as you can see, with these new changes, there is a lot of flexibility. And staff felt that this is a pretty important topic to bring to council and to receive some input if if council has any to offer about what it might like to see going forward. This is just really kind of the first step of of gauging, you know, what council's interest is in a public notice bylaw and what that might look like.
Okay. So we need a motion on the floor to either deny this or throw it out or keep it or whatever.
So we just received for.
Just received for information this morning.
We start the presentation from this, from the city's Corporate Services Department and thank them for the presentation. Move?
I have questions.
Okay.
We can put it on the table.
I have questions too.
You have questions.
So I'll move to refer.
I could, yeah, I'll move. I'll second the move.
Okay.
For discussion.
Yeah.
Well, it has to be referred if we wanted to go with one of these options to a business meeting.
Well, the first one is thanked, it says here, council received the presentation.
Received the presentation. It's got a mover and a secondary. We can have all the questions in the world. And then we can vote on that. Then we can put something else on the table. Counselor Page.
Move to receive.
You did that already.
Great. So when we, when we look at these options, option two certainly stands out to me if we can take even half of that budget a year and reallocate it. Because to me, it's all about how well spent is this money at achieving the objective that the most number of people that this, these notices are sent to relevantly informs them that they, there's some business going on that they want to know about. So it seems to my mind that if we could took even half of that $45,000 and spent it on targeted Facebook ads or targeted Twitter ads or whatever the hot thing is at the time, making sure that it's interlaced with an advertisement saying, hey, you're happily, you're located in this area. You should probably know that so and so is trying to extend their property line or do whatever they're happening to do. So I I would vote in favor of referring this to staff. Looking at option two, I think the newspaper still has relevance for some time, but I don't think that's going to be forever. And honestly, there there is that work that they have to do to get that readership to maintain that relevance. And where we as a country and a province need to support local journalism, I think actually comes from a different layer of government and a different kind of approach in general. But here, I want people to understand and know what's going on in their neighborhoods and their communities as effectively as possible and spend that money in the in the most efficient way possible. So I would be in favor of options two or three.
So I I think for tonight, what we're looking for back is, are you guys interested in this? And, you know, we would, you know, then Gabe and Sarah can continue to work on this, bring back some practical options of what we would think. And so I don't think you have to really decide two or three, but if you're, don't want one and you're open to two or three, that I think that's what's more important. And you guys, you know, we can send out here some of our thinking and of how, and what type of notices we would do and put that meat on the bones afterwards. But I think tonight is, you know, is this a good idea you want us to pursue?
Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry if I confused anyone. I I knew I threw the options up on the screen, but it's it's really, I just wanted to have an informal conversation. I thought a Cow meeting was an appropriate place to just to see, you know, there's general interest in moving forward on this.
Yeah.
Nicole and then Rick.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm definitely in support of pursuing this further. Question I have, it seems explicit, but I just want to double check. Do we have to name the two methods? It feels.
Yes.
A little prescriptive. We can't say generically one newspaper and then as you have it here, online and then let. That's why we'd have to go to option three, I assume, if we wanted to break out more than two options and put some parameters around the types of.
That's that's correct. My reading of the legislation is that we would have to specify. It wouldn't just be electronic. It would be City of Nelson website at Nelson.ca or City of Nelson Facebook. It would be. would be specific.
Specific. Thank you.
Gabe, just to further clarify, that is the minimum. We could do more, right?
That's correct. So, and that's what I was trying to get across in that option three is that you could just pass a very simple public notice bylaw that sets out your two means of publication. There's nothing that would prevent us from then having a internal policy or a council policy as to when we would also put some of those advertisements in the newspaper, for example.
I would challenge council on how we think about the role of Nelson Star and newspapers in general. And this may lead to how you negotiate with Nelson Star going forward. The, the number of stories they write that helped carry our message to the community and even more so, they're kind of like an ombudsman in the fact that they hold us to account in a way that I think is really productive. And if we lost that, you know, we, we lose something that's really essential to the community. So I think the, the money that we spend with them on advertising is more than paid back in terms of the value they deliver directly to the corporation. So I would want to keep them really in the loop. But I would say that the newspaper, the print paper alone is pretty antiquated. And I'd rather see something where, take everything you negotiate as a part of the advertising fees we pay with them, to amplify that message on social media, on their website, on their Facebook page, because they do have the highest engagement on Facebook of any source in Nelson. So if they leverage that position, they would get our notice far better than almost anything else. And targeted Facebook ads, targeted Twitter ads are probably strong, but I'd hate if we'd send money to Facebook or to Twitter for that matter. So keeping Nelson Star in the loop, I think is really, really good.
And just one, one comment on the Facebook option. For example, my understanding was that we would post those notices on our Facebook page. I don't believe we would need to go through an advertising route on Facebook where we're paying advertising costs for them to push the notice out to people. And part of that with our website or the Facebook option is essentially making sure the public understands that from now, like if, if we were to move, if the city were to move to an option like that, over time, the public would learn, you know, there's a specific place on the Facebook page or a specific landing page on the city website where the notices are posted. I'm not sure any municipalities are considering going through the advertising route where they would pay Facebook to have it like pop up on your news feed or not. That's not something I had considered, but maybe something we'll look at.
Well, just what I would say to that is that in the negotiation for the print with Nelson Star, get them to write a strong story in their feed on their Facebook page.
Right.
And so we're not paying for that. It's just, it's, it's an add-on to the, to the advertising that we're buying in the paper.
Understood.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. However, there might be one wrinkle in that, in that if we were doing a notice, we wouldn't necessarily want to be putting a story around it. Like the notice is all we've
No, no, that's what I'm saying. They would just, because right now what Nelson Star does on their Facebook page is they put ads, if you bought an ad in the paper, they will just do a post around that ad.
I get. I just thought you said do a story around it. So I, I understand. Any story would be, and the ad would be in there. Okay, thank you. I think that's a good idea, but leveraging the two options. Counsel, Woodward.
Thank you. I, I just, I just feel like, yeah, that, the idea of balancing with, with print, because, you know, it still has a lot of force. But I feel like whatever you can do to get it on people's phones, because it's just, phones are so ubiquitous, anything optimized for the phone, I think is, you know, people, is the most accessed way. So.
And if your, if your goal is to reach the widest audience, a hybrid model, in my mind, probably does achieve that. Because you do have some people that rely on the Star, but you have
Sure, for sure.
A significant portion of the population that probably does not pick up the Star or, or open it.
And I would say it's, it's even like, you know, people aren't necessarily, like, it's not a website anymore. It's really just like your, your, your feed on your phone or however, like it's always about the phone. So however we can act, get to people through that, I think was, would definitely be beneficial for the city.
Well, even the alerts, even the VoIP alerts.
Yeah. Right. So the other thing I think, as Gabe mentioned, was really thinking of the type of information that we're getting out there statutorily, like the annual report. I don't know if posting that in the newspaper or on the new, the Nelson Star's Facebook page is really getting people to pick up the annual report. So on that type of statutory, we may want to think of, how do we tell that story that you might actually look up at the annual report or come to a budget meeting or do something else? So I, so I think that's the flexibility that's been built in is making sure the, what that statutory notices we have to do, are we using the right channel to really, you know, get the audience that we're trying to get? Because some of these are, you know, some of these are pretty dry. And, you know, not too many people are affected or are interested. And, you know, are we spending a whole bunch of money on trying to, you know, for very little value? So, so I think that's the part of the puzzle is, is channeling that in the most effective way. I don't think the same channel for everything is probably the right route, even if we, you know, because that would allow you to go, you know, you know, we're just gonna use our Facebook and website as our two statutory things. But we do know on these type of things, we wanted to go out to a wide audience and people that read newspapers and people that, whatever. So I'd just keep that in mind.
Nice, Kevin. Nicole?
I'm concerned that we haven't talked about email. Because I do feel, where are we at with that in terms of our taxpayers? And what do we mail out? What do we email out currently? Do we have any communications going out? Or are we just responding to email questions when they come in? Do you know what I mean? Like, I would see that as being one of the most targeted communication lines we might have, rather than a general advertisement versus?
Yeah, I think Kevin might have some input, or the city manager might have some input. I was just gonna note that, I think I mentioned in the presentation, you know, when we publish on, our publishing agendas on that software, it does do an email blast to people that are signed up. I'm not sure what, what those numbers are in terms of how many people are signed up, but that's something that I'll go back and look at because it's a good point as to whether that would be an option. And I believe that was listed by the province as a potential.
It's there on your list, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay, thanks very much. You think you got some idea now?
Very welcome. Well received.
Good job.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thanks, Gabe. That's great.
All right. Next is the Cow Presentations. Are you carrying this ball, too, Gabe?
I am. You're stuck with me tonight.
Definitely need to have a word before he gets this one on.
And this is the Committee of the Whole Presentations policy. And I think Gabe and Sarah are thinking of having a bit of a glance at this to see if we're doing this the right way, or do we need to adjust it or whatever. So give us your full meal deal there, Gabe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Me again. So we're at a Cow meeting, and we're gonna talk about how do we schedule delegations to a Cow meeting. And I think
Or not.
Or not. That's, that's correct. I think it's, it's timely. I think, you know, sometimes in the spring, this topic does seem to flare up a little bit as, as we see there is sometimes more demand than we can handle in light of the fact that oftentimes, the January Cow meeting is, is reserved for a, a different set of presentations. In a year like this year, we did not do a December Cow meeting. The Cow, the Cow presentation you received tonight from the Cootine Conservation Society, I can tell you that I was working with Ms. Craig back in September about finding a date. So it takes time, but then when they do come and you get a great presentation, it, oftentimes there's things, it's hard to know the, the amount of scheduling that went into it. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And, and same with a presentation like Kofi, I think we talked about that one. But they had contacted us last July. And so sometimes finding that right date for the, for the group, when, when they fit into council's schedule can be challenging. Anyways, I will hop right into this one. I do have a short little outline. I will keep this presentation short. I know you guys have had a long day already. I just want to talk a little bit about the potential for a policy that would provide transparent and clear guidelines to staff, to council, and to the public, that could answer questions as to how these presentations are scheduled, rather than having it kind of in a black box. So what, part of that conversation is what should Cow Presentations be for? What does our council procedure bylaw already provide as to how those should be scheduled? What have we been doing in the past? That's the historical piece. And what problems would a policy address? Do we even need a policy? And then some potential policy ideas. So what is the purpose of a Cow presentation? The text up there is, is a little small, but I think there's a lot of, you'll look at different municipalities in the province or in Canada, and you'll see that different municipalities use Committee of the Whole Presentations for different things. Some municipalities don't have Committee of the Whole meetings. Some of them use it as an avenue for staff to present updates on projects that are happening or to present information on upcoming decisions. Some municipalities use them as a way for external organizations only to present to council. And some use them as a more open forum for the public to speak to council. So those are all good uses of a Committee of the Whole meeting, in my mind. It's just a matter of, of what are we trying to achieve with our meetings? So council's procedure bylaw was brought, the most recent iteration was adopted in 2020. So it was brought to this council. Some, I don't believe this was a focus of that bylaw at the time, but it is important that council know that this procedure bylaw does address Committee of the Whole meetings and presentations. And whatever policy might come in the future or direction that council would provide on that topic, it needs to be consistent with the procedure bylaw. As you all know, the bylaw trumps policy, but we're able to adopt a policy that would refine or tailor something as long as it's consistent. And so in relevant part, the procedure bylaw does provide that there's a maximum of three of these type of delegations or presentations, I use that term interchangeably, per Committee of the Whole meeting. That actually was an addition in 2020 because we saw that there were meetings where we'd have five or six or seven presentations. And I think there's a lot of policy reasons as to why you might want to not have so many presentations. It makes for a long meeting, but also how much information can council really absorb? So I think narrowing down the amount of presentations really allows council to focus on three at any given meeting, and that just seems more reasonable. So that was in addition to the 2020 version of the procedure bylaw. Aside from that, generally speaking, the procedure bylaw says that presentations should not address matters that are outside the jurisdiction of the city. Obviously, that is very broad and, and difficult to apply. And, and I think we've seen different groups that, that are not necessarily, they may not agree with, with how some of those decisions are made with regards to what, what is the jurisdiction of the city. The corporate officer and the mayor hold the authority to schedule presentations according to the nature and priority of the presentation subject matter. So that is currently in the procedure bylaw. And finally, presentations request regarding operational matters will be referred to staff. And so I think we've seen examples of that come up this spring, where if someone wants to come and present about, for example, a Nelson next or a plan that has already been approved by council and is being implemented by staff, it seems that we would view that as operational and have them connect with staff as an example of how that might play out. This is the historical piece I was talking about. So how have Cow Presentations been scheduled to date? Well, they've been scheduled consistent with the council procedure bylaw that I was just referencing. And they've been scheduled in a manner where staff is, are really working hard to try to bring council the presentations that we feel are, are high priority and that maximize value to council and to the public. We've done that without maybe clear policy or transparent guidelines, and so that's what brings us here tonight. What type of presentations have we been scheduling? Well, I looked back over the past two years and came up with that list. And it's, I think, a really impressive list. And it shows that we're receiving presentations from staff, from other governmental organizations, from strategic partners, from community organizations, and also occasionally from industry or private sector groups. So it really does run the gamut up there. I think there's probably twenty or twenty-five names up there. And so what problem would we be trying to address with a potential policy? And so I think the, the idea to come and have this discussion with council arose from some of the scheduling issues that may have cropped up in the, the spring and winter. And so sometimes, I think, oftentimes a group will approach me as staff, or approach staff. And if they don't necessarily get the response they like, or if they don't get a date at the next meeting, they will then reach out to council or to an individual counselor. And it's, it becomes, the, the case then becomes that there are different conversations going on with different staff, with different counselors, and with, and with the same group. And I'm not trying to blame a particular group. I think it's human nature. I think we see it at all different levels of, of these types of things. You'll just ask different people related to the organization until you get the answer that you'd like. And then it becomes difficult for us to relate people back to a specific set of guidelines that are transparent and clear and say, well, here are the guidelines that we're applying when we schedule these. And so I think that was the thought process, was that if we had a council-approved policy and it is endorsed by council and it sets out how we schedule these in a, in a manner that is more detailed than what's currently in the council procedure bylaw, that will provide clarity to everybody and will also provide staff with the opportunity to tell a group, here's what we're looking at when we're scheduling these presentations, and here's why you get the next delegation slot or you don't. So that's kind of the, the idea here. So we're looking to maximize benefit to council. We're looking to provide clear and transparent guidelines. And when I think about this, really, we need two components to a policy, would be the way that, that I see it. We need minimum eligibility criteria that sets out, there's simply some presentations that we will not receive because they're not appropriate for council as a delegation. I think most often, that manifests itself in individual residents that would like to come speak to council. And so this goes back to that slide at the beginning. What is the purpose of a Committee of the Whole delegation? Is it for individual residents to come and have a ten-minute slot to speak with council? That's something that council should think about, but currently in our council procedure bylaw, that's not necessarily how these delegations are framed. And there are so many groups, some of those groups that we showed you on the previous slide, partners in government, community organizations, presentations from staff, those are the ones that seem worth prioritizing in a manner, or, or making sure that we offer them the, the delegation slot. And so I think with a minimum standards or an eligibility criteria, we can tell individual residents that the appropriate forum to speak to council is at the public participation segment of the meeting, or through email or letter, or by reaching out to individual counselors to have a discussion with them. So that's one piece of a policy would be a kind of an eligibility criteria. It would also loosely set out that these delegation slots are not to address grievances against the city, which sometimes are requests that are made to us, or consistent with the procedure bylaw, operational issues that staff can address. And at a minimum, the issue would be concerning the, the city of Nelson. But again, I think that is a difficult standard to apply. So those would be the minimum standards that would allow us to kind of vet delegation requests and say, if you meet this minimum standard, then we will move on to scheduling you and, and using the, the priority ranking framework that I'm gonna present next. And if a presentation was not eligible, we would explain to them why and explain to them what their options or other avenues to communicate with council might be. And, and we already do a lot of that. So if you've noticed, we haven't had individuals come present. We've had individuals that are affiliated with a group or come on behalf of a group. And so this would just kind of formalize that piece. In terms of priority ranking, it's, it's a recognition that oftentimes we have multiple eligible presentations that would like the quickest possible avenue to come speak with council through a delegation. And so we need to have some criteria through which we can essentially select the three most relevant, most beneficial delegations. That doesn't mean that if someone doesn't get the next opportunity, or that if someone gets rescheduled, that they're never going to come. And I think that's part of what I was trying to convey in, in terms of referencing the presentation that we had tonight, a, a group that contacted us last fall. It, it sometimes just takes a lot of rescheduling to find a, a good opportunity. The reality is that sometimes we'll have a presentation scheduled from a group and it's not time-sensitive. And it could come, it may, it may need to be rescheduled to accommodate a, a presentation that's deemed high priority. And so the idea of some priority ranking is that it would give staff, again, a hierarchy of, of things to look at, to say, this is a of, of things to look at to say, this is a presentation that needs to go to council now, and here's a presentation that can go to council later. And so these are the ones that came to mind when I was preparing this, this PowerPoint. I think obviously if, like with many other things, if we have a council resolution directing us to, to do something, that automatically becomes high priority, of the highest priority, I would say. So I don't think it's been happening very often, but if council ever were to pass a resolution directing us to invite a group, that would be a high priority presentation. Other than that, I think presentations from staff, it's a really nice way for staff to come and provide information about an upcoming decision or to provide an update about a plan that's being implemented or some other project. And it's not just about providing that information to council. It's about providing that information to the public. And these meetings are a good way of doing that because they are streamed and they're available for the public to, to come and view in person or to go and view the recording later on.
So Gabe, before you lead the staff one, I, I just want to talk about how the committee of the whole came to be.
Exactly. Good point, Kevin. I think I'll pick up on that one if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
So Janice, you remember? And the idea of the committee of the whole was, it was actually the, that was the goal, was staff presentations. And the reason for that was at one point, each council member had it, was designated as the liaison to library, public works, parks, cemetery, hydro, and Keith, you could pick whatever you wanted.
Police.
Sorry?
The Culver.
The Culver Committee, right?
How come I get the cemetery?
So what was happening there at budget time?
The close.
You had each individual counselor bringing their agenda to the table for the particular portfolio that they were charged with, which in turn was putting us basically where we were in 2000, 1999, where certain departments were getting all the money and the other guys were being left in the lurch. So the committee of the whole came about so that everybody was privy to staff's proposed, staff, all the staff came forward from the various departments and laid out their strategic plan for their particular department and their ask for funding to support that. And that's how the committee of the whole. Now we ended up with a kind of a hybrid model where we thought, well, hang on a minute. We've got lots of time on our hands here. Why don't we invite so and so to come and tell us their stories? And then it's, it's actually got to the point now where.
It's more of that.
Yeah. It's a flip flop of what was intended for in the first place. And I actually happen to think it does, it serves us very well in some areas, but it's a disservice in some other areas when it comes to the responsibility that we have as elected officials in the first place to make sure of paving the streets, the sewer works and water flows downhill or whatever those old rigmaroles are, hydro and so on, parks, et cetera. So that's how it sort of came about.
Can I just add to that?
And it made it a lot easier for staff as well, Kevin.
Right.
Because that gives staff two weeks then to work on putting packages together for council. And it gave council a better opportunity then to say, okay, we'd like to add this piece to public works or that piece to parks or that piece to library or whatever. So that's really how it sort of worked. And that was the whole idea so that it would be a decision of the whole to fund hydro, decision of the whole to fund public works, not a lobbying campaign by the director to public works to make sure that their departments were being fully covered. And it did us a disservice because we ended up with some departments overfunding and some departments that weren't.
Yeah. And the other, and I came to the city after the committee of the whole was established, so I wasn't privy to the old system. But I know the other part was, so you, staff would go to all these committee meetings and there would be a big debate about whatever. And, and some recommendation would come forward. It would come to council, then there would be the same debate with all of council to have that same discussion you just had at this committee meeting. So it was very inefficient for, you know, staff spent half their time in these committee meetings, you know, debating this stuff and then to come to council and the council would have that same debate and you go, why are we having this debate twice?
Those meetings were chaired by the individual counselor.
Yeah.
It was, it was a selected to be, to delegate for that portfolio.
So that's the history of how the Cow meeting came to be.
I think this is very timely to have a, you know, another conversation.
Yeah.
About are we doing the right thing? Counselor Woodward?
Sorry, you were going to say something?
I was just going to close because this is the last slide. I was just going to say, yeah, my closing remark is just that, you know, I think staff, maybe more than the public and more than council, would, would welcome clear criteria that we can rely on to turn groups away or to schedule according to a priority. Cause we are more or less trying to maximize councils, the value to council and to the public with these presentations, but it's just not always easy to juggle amongst different groups. And so I think for us, having a clear policy would be really helpful. And yeah, that, that was just something I wanted to throw out there.
I was just going to say in the three and a half years I've been sitting in this chair that I found the committee of the whole to be, like it's really helped me kind of have an umbrella view of the whole city from like a whole bunch of different avenues. Plus it connects you in with the region too, because there's regional people come to, to speak to us. So I really don't want to lose that. I mean, I think it's a, it's a very educational process and it gives us a deeper ability to, to make decisions from a place of knowledge.
But I think, I think one of the things we're thinking about here is like, how do they fit into our strategic planning? So council, so it's like as an example, you know, Counselor Page sent us off tonight to have a look at giving $20 from every resident Nelson to this conservation fund, right? So that's an example of what we were trying to actually get away from was that, was those one offs that would, because they were coming up all the time, Janice, weren't they? Like they would just come out of the woodwork, these one offs, and now all of a sudden staff's running away, trying to figure out, okay, how would we do this $20 thing? Well, hang on a minute. Did anyone look at the list they already, they've already got to do? You know, we already give them a list and now we're saying, okay, well, here's another one. So that was, you know, obviously the idea was to.
I just want to add the, to, to what I was saying was that, that it's given me insight as a, as a city counselor on, in areas that I, I would have no touch, I could not, I wouldn't know about. So I think it's, so we can find some sort of way to balance it. I think it's really important for, for us to, to be able to do that and get into areas that we wouldn't have knowledge of or are not part of our life, but we need to make decisions that affect that area.
And I think we can, we can quite, we're not going to discontinue it, I don't think. I would hope not.
Yeah. And I, I think in, like it's not just the committee of the whole meeting, it's what do you do with that, right? So, you know, so, and I think good process is, okay, we heard this new idea, is it a priority? Should we put it on, you know, our priority list? Where does that fit? I think that's the good value discussion. Some isn't just informative. Here's what's going on in our community, but some new ideas come up. Okay, now what we do with it? So I think that's the piece that's important afterwards instead of council feeling that you're obligated to make a decision on that particular thing at that time, you know, where does it go? And, and maybe that's part of the, you know, the policy is, is where does it go after, after a presentation? Maybe that's another piece we want to think about.
Yeah. And I, I think too, just to add, we're not talking about getting away, I don't think this policy fundamentally changes what we've been doing. It just gets everybody on the same page as to what we're doing and make sure that everybody understands and is comfortable with it. I don't think we're proposing any radical changes from what we're already doing. I think we just want something that's clear that everybody can understand. And I think there's a lot of value in, you know, I think we're always learning. And I, when I look about what the committee of the whole could be and what it should be, I think that's what this conversation is about. And I think about some presentations we received this spring, for example, with the climbing association. They worked hard, they did a site feasibility study, they spoke to council, and the committee of the whole wasn't just about informing what will be an upcoming council decision, but it kind of helps that public engagement piece too, where it provides an opportunity for the public to hear what council's already heard through other avenues. And just as a good example, we had another group recently come, a sports group with an idea for a facility, looking for land. And staff was able to sit down with that group and say, here's what a successful process looks like, because they wanted to come talk to council right away. And we were able to say, have you thought about doing a site feasibility study? Have you thought about going to the recreation commission? Have you thought about doing these things? Because if you do those first, when you come to the committee of the whole, it'll have that much more value and you'll be taken that much more seriously. And so I think again, it's about refining what should these presentations be? And, and that's, I think, again, just to emphasize, I think as staff, our job is to make sure when we bring a presentation, it offers value to council and to the community and it doesn't feel like a waste of time.
And that group has circled back to recreation to look to have those discussions about what that might look like and we'll hear more about it in the coming months. I had a few questions.
Yeah.
Just to bring us back to the, the first principle of this discussion. So if I think about the areas where there's been concern in the past, I wonder about maybe more transparency on both what the upcoming schedule is, because we, we will get information about when that is, you know, as soon as the public does. So if, if there's an ability inside the reporting mechanisms of our meetings to have, you know, here's the upcoming quarters and what, you know, these are confirmed, these are still question marks, but at least what staff's thinking. And, and that reporting might also include who was declined, even if it's just a list of names and proponents of like decline for, doesn't fit with any of this, any of the, any of the values we put in our policy or we've seen them, we just saw them last year or whatever it is, a quick note, like maybe that would help the, just the reporting side of things. Otherwise, I think I do have a bit of a question because I think we all appreciate that there's been more people asking to meet than the three slots allow. With the flexibility allowed between the corporate officer and the mayor, do we need to hold to the three as stringent? Or should we, there be a little bit more flexibility on maybe having a fourth or, you know, tonight, we, two of them were from staff, which is fair, but also, you know, maybe there needed to be four tonight.
So Sarah would, as an example, I, I think we might've talked maybe four or five times in four years over. So Sarah would have discretion on, and she might say to me, well, you know what, it's going to be a pretty big agenda if we put this one on, but you know what, they've been trying to get on for six months, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And, and we really do try, try to maximize your time. So it really like, we often have a conversation, well, how long do we think this presentation is going to be? How, how long do we think council's discussion about the presentation is going to take? And well.
Which is a guessing game.
Which can be a guessing game for sure, but it's three, anytime we've gone, had more than three, you know, you have been sitting here past 10 o'clock at night. And, and the presenter then has to sit here until 9:30 when they can present. It makes, it just, it really doesn't make good sense.
So we have all control over them, but they have no control over us, right? That's where it breaks down.
And I would say, when that's happened, it's been something urgent that we, that council's coming up to make a decision on. And that will generally be myself saying like, we need to get this, this one on here and what's those other ones look like? Can we, you know, can we get this extra one? And then Sarah kicks me after that and says, I told you it was going to go way long.
Seven o'clock.
Oh, thank you. So I just want to comment on the process that's used at the regional district and they're much more strict on the, on the time in regards to delegations that come forward to a regional district meeting. Where, where they have them is not that important, but they have them at the beginning of a meeting. And it's always, it's never more than, than two. And it's 15 minutes. And I, I was thinking that we've had the conservation, the young woman that was here has, has been to the, yeah, she, she went, she, she got 15 minutes. And 15 minutes has to include your question period, like your question time. And, and the chair does cut them off. Like you get the, okay, you've, we're giving you 15 minutes and you're at 12. If you'd like to have any questions asked, you better be winding up. And then there's one minute left, there's five directors that have questions. First person that's recognized gets to ask that one question and then the time is up. Now we don't want to be maybe that hardcore, but I think it's very important that we are letting people that come to speak know that there's a time limit. And I think that time limits can vary depending on the importance of the, of the communication. Obviously if staff is preventing, presenting something that's long and complicated, maybe that report does take half an hour for them. But if it's maybe industry coming, maybe industry only gets 15 minutes. And then it's up to the chair then to, to make sure that the rule is enforced. Cause I think timeliness is important because we have three of these and I always think that I'm sure that they told that they have about a half an hour. And so I think, okay, start at seven, out at eight thirty. And that's never happened yet that I've.
Could happen, could happen today.
Do you have to say half hour?
No. We, we say, always say you have 10 minutes to present. That's the amount of time that you have to present.
Yeah. And then it's, and it's always longer than that. And so, I mean, so, and then, then we have questions. Sometimes the thing that we think that we're going to have the least amount of questions on, we actually have the most. So it is a little bit about the chair controlling the agenda and then making that really clear to members and then just, and then always saying to them, Gabe, you've got 15 minutes and your time starts now. It's a bit ruthless, but it does allow you to get the work accomplished. And personally, I think prioritization is good and I kind of like to hear from everybody that's been there. So I'm, I'm good on, I mean, industry is one of our stakeholders, although Kofi might not be, you know, cutting trees in downtown Nelson. But I think it's important because there's agencies and people that live in our community that have jobs within our, they're direct or indirect with organizations like that. So I think it's important to hear from them. I think it's really important to hear from staff. I think it's important to, to hear from the groups that we fund all of. I would like to see the end of the 17 presentations. That's probably the, of the whole year, that's probably the one day that I almost dread coming to council is when we listen to every group that we support here in town come and present on one meeting day. I don't think that does them justice and it surely does not do us around the table justice to listen to six or seven presentations all at once with that intensity. And I would like to see that, that changed in, in, in the future. I just don't think that does anybody justice. But I'm, I'm kind of happy, but I like the idea of a priority. So I think you, you know, my vote would be to go back and do a little bit more work on that and see what you can come up with. And we just have to rule a little bit more with a, it's appropriate to say iron fist when there's, you know, this conflict in the world, but just I think be more timely and, and more on the, on the gavel, Mr. Mayor in terms of.
Yeah. There's, but there's sometimes there's conversation that happens that's got value too, right?
Yeah.
So, but you know, you're right. I mean, it's quite easy to drop that hammer and say you're done. I mean, that's the easiest thing to do.
Particularly if they're being told 10 minutes.
Well, hold on a minute, I have a question.
We're going to allocate so much time for each counselor.
Yeah, exactly.
Minutes for counselor. Oh, that's why it takes a lot. That's why it takes a lot.
But I, I think picking up on that point, that is why we try to limit it to the three because I, as Gabe said, trying to bring value to you and we don't see value as having someone, you know, quickly present to you and you, and council says nothing and they walk away. And like, how is that given any value? So we're, we're trying to create that avenue that there's enough time to ask appropriate, you know, questions that we get a sense as staff of where you guys want to go with some of these things. So, so that's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Back from the community as well.
Absolutely, right?
A lot of good things have come out of these presentations, a lot of good things over the years that probably wouldn't have happened without somebody coming to that table there and laying them out and somebody grabs onto it. And the next thing you know, it's, you know, part of our strategic plan and we're, we're doing it.
Yeah. And, and I, I've noticed as well that the star often picks stories out of the committee of the whole presentations and run it in the paper, so.
Exactly, yeah. Okay.
Do we need to pass receipt?
Any further comments at all that, so we can drag another one out for two hours or?
So you have this, you give it more thought, you give Gabe some more feedback offline if you like, if this makes sense to you in the note, yes, et cetera, like this, if there's some other things you want us to think about, send that as well.
I'll move receipt.
Second.
On favor. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you all.
Gabe, good job.
Eight thirty-one.
Busy morning.
Your staff presentation.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. We have both a late item.
There's a late item.
Oh, number nine, right.
There's a late item.
Counsel reports too.
Late item.
Count, late items after council reports. I know, I, I'm a little upset, I'm a little upset the mayor.
Almost forgot you. Well, it'd be Bill, we'd be phoning him later. I'm glad that you're doing this.
I see the matter here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. I think we all got this, received this email a few days ago from one of our city's premier volunteers.
Um, I think we all got this, received this email a few days ago from um one of our city's uh premier volunteers, as we have many, many of them. Uh, reminding us that upcoming uh, next week is the National Volunteer Week, April twenty-fourth to thirtieth. I'm just going to uh read a part of Bill's uh, Bill's email. Volunteering is empathy in action, volunteers bring heart to Canada's communities. The volunteer sector is the third major sector of activity in Canada. The other two major sectors are the public and private sectors. Given the scope of the voluntary, voluntary sector and volunteer activity in Canada, promoting volunteerism generally is comparable to promoting industry, trade and commerce for the benefit of the community at large. Efforts to promote, to promote industry, commerce, agriculture, horticulture and craftsmanship have each been held charitable, where the organization's mandate was directed to provide, to providing a benefit to the public by enhancing the particular activity, for example, in terms of providing for greater efficiency and higher standards. The charitable sector is comparable in size to the entire economy of British Columbia. As a whole, the sector accounts for one-eighth of Canada's gross domestic product. And um, just a couple of things here. Um, leadership, um, leadership and volunteerism equals community. Leadership is making space for others to act. Volunteerism fills such space. Volunteerism has a value of over a hundred and eighty-four billion dollars. Volunteerism improves health by strengthening the body, improving mood and lessening stress in participants. Volunteers on average spend fifty hours per year donating their time to the greater good. Helen Dyer, volunteerism is the voice of the people put into action. These actions shape and mold the present into a future of which we can all be proud. Winston Churchill said, we make a living by what we get, we make a life by what we give. Elizabeth Andrew, volunteers do not necessarily have time, they have heart. Sherri Anderson, volunteers don't get paid, not because they're worthless, but because they're priceless. And Stephen Jobs, because the people who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do. The currency of volunteerism is the money this city and RDCK, RDCK do not have to spend. And I would just encourage everybody that, first off, if you're a volunteer, thank you very much. And if you see somebody out there volunteering, thank them. Thank you.
You're here.
Very good, thanks very much, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Council reports.
Council reports, go ahead.
I'll just go quickly and if you guys have any questions, feel free to bring them up or if any corrections, wherever else I sit with you guys, you know, I'll look for you for details. Uh, so at the NADP table, uh, we've had a couple of meetings since our last kind of reporting out. Uh, there's a lot of focus there on uh workforce, workforce shortages as it's being experienced by the business community and workforce housing, which is also identified as kind of being an interlinked issue. The NADP coordinating group has started to work towards helping, there's an opportunity in Rosemont and there are a couple of groups kind of looking for organizational capacity to perhaps put in an offer. So there's uh a letter going out from the NADP to the, the property owner up there about kind of slowing things down, finding space and room for a group to uh take over that property. And that, I'm talking, of course, of the, the Caylin, it's all out there. But I just think that's public information and, and good to know that the, there's work being done there to try and address some of these uh long-term shortages. Uh, on the library, uh, there's been a lot of work just in this digital, digital malaise of the last couple of months around informational freedom values, understanding uh the role and the mission of the library and getting clarity around the board and in the organization about uh how we protect uh the informational integrity of people's individual uh political partisan views and how the library is that, that neutral place for uh knowledge uh to, and greater, and providing an opportunity for research and, and education. Uh, and also, of course, a, a really big piece of businesses we're working towards is that in additional regional participation and, and how that uh process will go through at the regional district to hopefully uh help, hopefully have the area E residents see the value of, of contributing into the library and becoming full-throated partners. So that's more from the library's perspective, uh figuring out how to have a, a really sophisticated conversation with that community about the values of the library. So we'll see how that plays out in the end. Um, it's all up to area E anyway, it's, it's up to the people. Uh, we just finished strategic planning, uh, an overview, policy overview at the CDC last week. Uh, so just having a look over all of the advocacy pieces, all the projects and the works that have been going on at the CDC. And also uh had, taking a look kind of broader and regionally at not just what the policy documents look like. Uh, you've heard of me all speak before about the sector wanting to have more of a long-term strategic plan that makes, makes sense and gives certainty to the institutional partners on, on where the city sees uh cultural development going. But one of the challenges uh we kinda came up with out of that strategic planning is not just looking at the policy pieces here within the city, but looking at the policy pieces in the RDCK of which we're a member. And like, where are there gaps? Where are there opportunities? What, what kind of efforts are being, are going on in the regional district? Uh, what kind of policies have already been developed in the regional district? Or, or where do we see, you know, in fifty years, pieces that will get developed? And is there a role to play at the CDC at both finding alignment and, and pushing the regional district to uh increase its investment in cultural development in general? Because we will, uh, just understanding what that policy environment looks like uh is kind of a mission that will be taken on over there. And then we, most importantly, of course, we have the Association of Kootenay Boundary Local Government Conference starting on Friday morning. Uh, so delegates will be arriving Thursday for the most part. There's lots of great tours to celebrate the city of Nelson. Sorry, what was that?
Market.
Market.
No, you've gotta report on the market, do you?
You've gotta report on the market. So uh, there'll be lots of great presenters. We'll obviously have city staff will be uh telling delegates from across the region about the great things that Nelson Next is doing. And our climate work, we'll have presentations from uh the hub and many others, uh both from Nelson and from the broader region. Uh, just to, you know, do a lot of that peer networking that we look for, we haven't had a lot of opportunity to do. And so I expect we're gonna have a very great conference. Of course, uh COVID protocols will be in place and uh we'll be following all public health orders. And uh, I think at the end, uh, there'll be a lot of, a lot of great things that'll, and stories that'll come out of Nelson because there's a lot of great stories that we get to tell uh and celebrate. And so I'm looking forward to that weekend. I'm looking forward to seeing all you guys there for those you, for you, those of you who are coming. But uh, other than that, there's not much going on in recreation for next month, but I'll give you a bigger report in May.
Thank you.
Um, so market committee, um, so it was a pretty uh important last meeting we had cause it's, you know, the market's moving uptown again. And it was talking about, you know, how it's gonna be designed. You know, some of the farmers really wanted to be able to have double stalls. Um, and you know, that can be a challenge because other vendors can be like, well, hey, what, can I have a double stall? And so it was a, you know, um, Jordan and her, and Quinn um were struggling with this. And so the committee just said, look, it, it, it's a farmer's market, we should really be focusing on farmers. Uh, if they need a double stall, they should be able to get a double stall. And uh, and so that was decided on, it, it, it should be food focused, essentially, so. And the other piece was, we talked about percentages of vendors. So you, you really wanna like, make sure you're not just, you know, there's not fifteen potters, right? It's, you need to have percentages so you have a nice uh good variety happening there. So sometimes you have to say no, which I think is a, is a challenge because they've been sort of operating under this consensus or this uh idea that you, you know, whoever approaches gets in. But you actually have to curate farmer's markets, especially if they're really popular. So that can be challenging because you do have to say no sometimes, uh, and yes other times. But I think, you know, it's uh, there's learning happening and um, I think people are really excited about getting it back up on Baker Street. Um, it'll be uh, the, the garden market's happening on um Mother's Day long weekend.
May.
Yeah, it's, it's May eighth. Uh, so it's the first major public event on Baker Street in two, two years. So that's really exciting. I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people there just to see each other and buy some plants. Um, so yeah, so the, the uh.
And the, the invitations extended to the rest of Baker to.
That's right, to like, put out.
Without your clothes hanger or whatever.
We have to bring that council for a vote.
Without invitations still on there.
Yeah, I think.
Still on the table though to.
I think the idea is to get, you know, Baker Street invol- involved basically in, in the market.
Committee's leaving that on the table for council to consider.
So, um, yeah, it looks like it's uh, and then of course Saturday will continue at uh Conwood Falls. And uh slowly but surely, pieces get, continue to be done there. It's really, it's, I mean, it's, it's beautiful space.
Sunshades and that'll be.
That's right.
The agenda.
So.
And there's a bit of a re-alignment for the washroom, right?
That's right. So the, the washrooms being figured out uh to be put in, but there'll be sunshades over the oval.
We'll bring that back.
Okay. So, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm really excited. I think it's gonna be great to have uh the markets up and running again and in a, in a, in a sort of, I mean, there's still COVID protocols to a certain degree, but it, it will be, you know, like it was, sort of. So I'm pretty excited to see that happen again.
Thank you.
Uh, just quickly, I attended a um uh sector consultation that the chamber hosted with the uh builders and developers, construction industry. And the takeaway there was um, there was uh seven different groups there. Um, they all have the same concerns as most businesses, um, you know, costs of everything and, and what have you, labor, housing. But they're all, uh, they're all, um, they're all booked for the rest of this year. Two or three of them are booked for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
There's no end in sight.
Yeah.
Uh, of development and home building. One fellow had uh three people that bought property and realized how much their homes were gonna cost. And two of them just said, we can't do it. And the other ones just said, well, we know we're gonna pare back and it's not what we want, but it's what we need. And they're continuing on. So there's things like that going on, but overall, um, it's very strong still.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Charwood and Counselor Laffenberg?
Yeah, I, thanks Chair. I debated with Counselor Charwood if I was gonna do a council report on this evening. And I'm really tempted to say no, but I have kind of committed, promised to do it. So I'll be really quick if I can. I made a couple of, I followed through at a couple of meetings with people in the um, uh, the anti-vax mandate community. Wanted to get a, a, an updated read on, on how that community is doing. Um, and then also to, to get a better sense of what they've wanted from their, their council. And I'll, I'll just give you a quick little, uh, couple of takeaways I took from those meetings. The first is that there are quite a few people. There's, there's maybe more than, than a lot of us, or certainly more than I expected, um, in the city itself. Like, I, I think when you look at the, the protests and the rallies, you think like, these people are coming from all over the region. And I think that might be true, but also there's a, a, a pretty big contingent in the city itself. Um, there's a recent hack of the Give, Send, Go um, donor list to the Freedom Convoy. And uh, it's publicly available. And then you, you get a little sense of that, yeah, yeah, it's genuine, it's, the commitment is pa- is strong and the numbers are not small. Um, and, and one of the things I think that we should consider as counselors or maybe as a council table itself is to do a little more listening um of this community. And, and part of the reason for that, I think, is that we're operating in, in two pretty distinct worldviews, at least. Um, and one way to take, get a sense of the worldview difference is if you're a religious person, for example, um, we tend to integrate pretty well as a society with people of different faiths. But in part, I think is because we tend not to um hold that faith uh or that, that viewpoint in the world itself. It's largely abstract, it's in our minds or kind of in our hearts, but it's not in the world. And so there's no kind of conflict between people. But if you're in a, if you're orthodox and you're really leading with your, your passion or your faith, that's when you get conflict. Uh, it's because fundamentally they're at, they're at deep odds. I, as an aside, uh, last summer driving into Vancouver at three in the morning, I was listening to Christian radio. And the uh, just to check in, and the, the program, in all sincerity, was about the demons among us and how to spot them. And it was saying, you know, these are the kind of characteristics you're looking for when you're talking to a person. They're everywhere, they tend to be in this, these types and stuff. And what I, what I got from that and then kind of got reinforced again is, yeah, when you really believe something and then when that belief is reinforced by your community in particular, it starts to almost manifest itself in your, in your world. And that's when I think the conflicts are starting to, to come. There's also, um, but I think that the, the solution to that uh is, or the, the, the necessary corrective, I think, is that listening. It's simply that I found that just spending some time listening was really good at, at um sort of pushing those really powerful, potentially powerful ideas back into the abstract and out of the world, so you're not looking for the demons among you. You're like, oh, maybe the demons don't exist after all, or maybe they do, I just don't care as much anymore because I'm talking to one of those demons and he doesn't seem like a bad person. Um, and then the, the final thing I would say is that um, some of the fear around the vaccines, and I think we've all probably heard this or, or felt this, is um based in a, in a, in an alternate health worldview in which choice, like your, your choice is the determinant of health. It's the choices you make, whether it be what you eat or even how you see the world. So if you're kind of reacting to the world through fear, then that sort of manifests in, in the reactions to health. Not a, necessarily a wrong idea in any way, but if you, again, believe on it without the dialogue of people that maybe have a different or alternate viewpoint, it hardens. And, and again, I think we just, we lose connection. So, um, it's been a useful exercise. I'm sure some of you have done it too. Um, and I think we should continue to do it, especially as we lead up to the October election. Be, um, if we don't, we, it's at our own peril, I think, as a community, not so much as a council.
Well. Dennis?
Well, I mean, maybe I, maybe I had the best project of the day, actually. Today I actually was invited, um, well, I was invited last week, but it was presentation today at Selkirk College from the SOAR program. And for any of you, of you who don't know the SOAR program, SOAR stands for Steps to Opportunities, Academics and Readiness. And uh, this is a college education program um at Selkirk for young adults with uh special needs. And they have had a project on the go for. Diversibility, thank you, sorry. Um, a project on the go for about a year now, um, looking at housing needs. And it was really, it was just, it was heartwarming. Um, a lot of the young adults stepped up and talked about, described what would their perfect home be? And some of them stepped up and they talked, they had their mom or their dad with them to, to help coach them along a little bit. And it'd be like, I would like a bedroom and a bathroom and someplace for my, my cat. And it was just, it was just so charming. And it was like, and I need a meal because I don't cook. I, I wanna have, I wanna have a meal. Um, and it was wonderful, it was absolutely wonderful. Um, the parents talked about some of their concerns, parents are aging, they've still got um these young adults living at home. What happens when parents are gone? What happens when a child needs higher level of care and it's not available here? All of, all of these young adults spoke to the fact that they want to be able to stay in Nelson because what's really important to them is their friends and their buddies at the college and the SOAR program. And still being close to that, that one or two parents that's still here or their siblings that are still within the, um, within the community. So one of the things that they uh, um, you know, one of the questions that was asked, well, what happens if you started a society? And so these young people with the assistance of their parents and the educator at the college um, have uh gone out and they're just about to start their society. And it's gonna be called Best Friends Forever Housing Society. Uh, they've been out in the community making uh contacts. They've uh been involved with um, uh, the CLBC, uh, um, which is Community, uh, Community Living BC. They've been in touch with uh BC Housing.
They've been in touch with BC Housing. They were actually at this meeting, actually, they were making the rounds today, these politicians. But our MLA, Brittany Anderson was there with Nick Simons, the Minister of, of Social Development. I'm sure he commented on that when he saw you later in the, in the day. So they were there to participate in some of the Q and A. And they have also, at this point, reached out to Kiwanis as well. And so Kiwanis is now known as the Nelson, the Nelson Kootenay Seniors Housing Society, so not the Kiwanis Society any longer. My, my guess is they probably have lost their Kiwanis charter because they don't have enough members. So, and that, that land, which, you know, many of us have looked at for, for many opportunities for development, is a piece of land that they're potentially looking at for maybe where they would build this, this housing. And I just sort of thought, it was just, it was just, it was heartwarming and it was inspiring. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I was at that. And you might hear more about the society coming forward in the, in the next while, but they've got, they've got some really motivated parents. The young adults are, are very motivated. They've now, they've now pitched the ministry and they're, they're well on their way. And I think that it'll be interesting to see how they do. And, and there, there's another one where at some point here, maybe we would have some of these young adults come in and, and tell their story to council during some future COW meeting. Cause it was, it was, it was great this morning.
Here's what my wife said about it. Brittany came to our class, she was great, the class was amazing. Our instructor hit it out of the park, way out.
Wow. It was good. I met with the minister today and what a neat guy to talk to. He's actually, and he's been in the social.
He was a social worker.
Social worker for many, many years.
By trade, yeah.
Yeah, you're not pulling the wool over his eyes when it comes to, to that area. So we met at the hub actually and, and Remley, Brittany Anderson was there also. So it was good to touch base with them and, and listen to his ideas and suggestions. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure to, to work with the government over the last number of years because they've been very accessible. And that's just another example of connecting with the community, et cetera. So it was good to, good to have that opportunity today, so. All right, with that, are we okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we can get to the, all right, motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Remley, sent by Counsel Woodward. All in favor? Chair, what's the plan here?
So is that, is that your wife? That's the program director?
I'm going to ride on the cow.
He's the dean, okay. I think we're good. You're going to go tomorrow, right? You're going to be at the meeting anyway? So, yep. We're good. No, it was.